Evening, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. We are going to call this meeting to order at 6:03. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just for all.
Okay, we have a few adjustments to make to tonight's agenda.
Sure. We're going to mix up the agenda a little bit because we have some of our administrators who would like to get to Chase's celebration of life this evening. And so what we'll do is, following public comments, we will move I-4, I-3, I-1, I-2, I-5, I-6, I-7, and I-8 to right after public comments. And I'll take a motion for that to happen.
I motion to move all the Is to right after public comment.
I would love to second that. Okay, all in favor? All in favor. Okay, we don't have any approval of minutes, public comments? Sarah, do we have anybody? Okay. No public comments, no communications, no committee reports, superintendent reports? The Is go first.
Yep, so I think-
So Pam Lyden?
Pam Lyden.
You are first.
There we go.
Was that all set? "Thank you for the opportunity to share the kickoff of the 2023-2024 year at SMS. The hallways filled on the night of Tuesday, August 29th, with a tremendous turnout for open house. Each grade level was well represented with families and students. Thank you to the PTA for passing out Italian sodas and popcorn. That was a really special touch. As we journey through the school year, we will continue to focus and practice school safety in three building goals: student achievement, climate and culture, and building capacity. Our student achievement goal stems from using common assessment data to inform instruction and provide support, needing intervention through tier-one differentiation, and the MTSS process to achieve growth. Our school climate goal will provide a healthy, safe, and inclusive learning environment where students and staff are supported through positive interventions and supports to improve behavior and attendance. Capacity building goal will focus on using ERDs to provide staff with professional development and leadership opportunities that will foster individual and student learning." Excuse me. "On the opening days, students participated in developing a grade-level code of conduct. Students were asked what was needed to be done in order for us to have a successful year. They developed and voted on statements from the following categories: self, peer, teachers, student-to-teachers, and environment. Students also have done a great job practicing school safety drills. We've had three successful ones already and will continue to practice as the year goes on. Kudos to staff and students as they persevere through the heat during the first opening weeks. SMS School Counseling Office hosted fifth-grade camp. The week before school arrived, we invited fifth graders to tour, scavenger hunt, meet counselors, review their schedules, and have popsicles on the playground. We had about 60 students plus families attend two sessions for the fifth grade. Our SMS student leaders gave tours for the new students, grades 6 through 8. They came in two days in a row, two sessions a day, to give tours and greet our new students. We had about 20 new kids attend, and since we've had about 65 new registrants. We've enjoyed two fun nights of block parties for all grades with music concessions and other events. Music programs, sports teams, and a variety of clubs have been up and going. The late bus has been a great asset to support transportation for our kiddos. Also, a shout-out to our staff who are willing to be a part of these experiences and enjoying them with the student body. Sanford Middle School is dedicated to our students to ensure an all-around educational experience. We appreciate the support of the families and the school board for making each year full of gains and growth. I would like to just extend a heartfelt reach out to the Fromm Miller family this evening. SMS will forever keep Chase in our hearts."
Any questions?
Just a comment. I know I'm getting old because I stopped into the 6 through 8 block party, and then the popular song is now the Barbie song. I didn't quite realize that. So, yeah.
Carrie, you're invited to everyone.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, there's a lot of great energy there, but I walked out of there saying I'm feeling a little disconnected with this particular age group.
No, they were a success. We had a big turnout, and the kids were really pumped about it. So trying to keep the positives, keeping that climate and culture going, and continuing on. We want a great year.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I just want to say I have two kids now officially in the middle school. Both are thrilled and excited, and you guys do a great job.
Great feedback. Thank you.
Yeah, I only have one. One. Everybody else is at the high school, but all I hear is great things, too. Thank you so much.
My youngest two had a blast at the block party, so thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Who do you want next?
Next up, Sherry Barron, giving an overview of the opening at Carl J. Lamb Elementary School.
Hey, everybody. Thank you for having me. I'd also like to begin by giving a heartfelt shout-out to the Fromm Miller family, and we hope you're all good this time. Our opening this year was the start of our 33rd school year at Carl J. Lamb Elementary School. We welcomed 223 students in pre-K and four, including our new second pre-K. We added a classroom this year, and we had a ton of maintenance that happened over the summer to get us ready to open those doors, so I wanted to say thank you to our maintenance crew, our custodial crew, and the technology crew that did that work. But we did, we were lucky. We installed air conditioning in our library that helped us to combat that major heat wave we have. We added a new gas pool in our lobby for added safety. Internal and external locks were rekeyed. Also for safety, additional cameras were added in the lobby, and an additional monitor was installed in the office. At the CSH, you'll see some new paint, new lighting in our lobby, and our lobby restrooms, and a new stairwell, and a new countertop in our office. We're looking pretty.
Yeah.
Pretty soon, maybe this week, we're going to be starting to work on a drainage issue on our large playground, and I'll be dismantling a large piece of playground equipment. I think that you'll be very thrilled to hear this, maybe finally getting a great big, brand-new piece of equipment, a huge piece that started back when she was our PTA president at our school. So thank you very much to Sanford School Department, our PTA, our families, our community partners, our volunteers. We'll pay a community bill. Pepper on October 14th. We'll be arriving at 3:30. So in addition to the playground and what's happening there, we've also upgraded our Wi-Fi, so that's more secure now. And thanks to everybody that helped over the summer to get us ready. We did a lot of hiring this summer. We made internal moves. We've built 18 positions. Very complete with our new hires and like to officially welcome them. We want to part with our faculty. Really lucky. Thanks for our training on teacher companies and getting us ready to start our new school year, but also to thank you to all the parents and stuff with us because that helped to get a lot of our students here that they need. Our PTA put this up with Aroma Joe by Jabber Mill. So thank you to them for coffee and treats to get us through that day. Last year, our colored fun run, Renee Karen, former car company formerly has more quotes, was able to help a little better color fun run, and donated $400 worth of books for our classrooms to start the school year off. But thank you to her as well. Our open house was pre-kated for, and it was very well attended. We had a long line getting through. Everybody was involved in the work in front of our school. This year, for our, we've already met with our school committee to go over that, but we are focusing on the same three goals as the district has, so student achievement, privacy building, and climate and culture. We're just taking each of those and kind of notch them another year forward. Happy intercussion, don't forget those. Our buses are settled in now. We are arriving by 8:30 in the morning, and the last bus today left at 3:31. And we are wrapping up parent pickup around 3:20, so those procedures are going well. We've had a couple of our SAT meetings and done a repeat data into attendance, and our average daily attendance at CGL right now is about 95% for the fourth grade coming up. Those fourth graders. We posted a dental clinic, which serves 65 students already. Coming up, we have school pictures, pre-kay, and kindergarten here, and vision screening, playground party. We have a title one meeting, that community build of our playgrounds coming up. And we just want to say thank you to Gerard, Richard, Cheryl, and Trust for the special donations to make that possible. Now, the kindness club that's about to start is going to be run by advisors, nursing, Kirby, and special ed, sorry, formerly special ed tech now as student support transitional instructor Michelle England, and two student advisors. So we're in collaboration with a fifth grader from the middle school, who was a CJL alum, running. Penny LaHoo will be coming to us on Fridays to chair that, as well as a fourth grader. So thank you to them. Our music teacher, Ms. Cora, will be doing the folk dancing here at our school, and we're open to do something fun with family and our folk dancing. She'll also be hosting a Veterans Day for local veterans. This is the second time this has happened, but Ms. Smith, our kindergarten teacher, has weather at your school by WNTW Channel 8. So we are all in the Ted McEnroe coming on October 1st to have our students help to give the weather, so you don't see us on TV. I'd just like to thank all of you for your support and helping us have a successful start to the school year.
Thank you, Sherry. Count me out for folk dancing. Any other, no, nice job with Carl J. Lamb's opening. A very exciting time, especially when you look at the playground that's working, all the upgrades in the building that's been going on with that. So kudos to everyone who's been involved in doing that for it. Any questions for Sherry or comments?
Just lots of exciting things happening. Thank you very much.
I can't wait to come and visit because I haven't seen any of the updates, so I'll have to pop through. Thank you.
Okay, next is Susan Inman.
Hi, this is our third year. Our at all the category.
How's that? There you go. Sorry about that. Do you want to start all over? Okay. Susan Inman, Sanford Pride. Sorry about that. We are in our third year at Sanford Pride in our new building at 708 Main Street. Our enrollment this year is 370. We ended in June with 360 students, so we picked up 10 students along the way somewhere, which is good. Second year of pre-K. As Sherry mentioned, we also had, we had two pre-K classes last year, so we feel a little bit ahead of the game. We're used to 32 four-year-olds in the building at one time. We continue with our K for Me and our pre-K for Me curriculum. As I was mentioning, we're interested to see those children particularly who are in the K for Me curriculum, were there any advantages in test results? So we're looking at that. Our open house is successful, just like everyone else's. It seems like everyone comes out on that evening, whether it's warm or cold, or we have popsicles or water. Usually end the evening with thanking parents for being there, and they all head to the playground. So that's okay. We like that. Another piece that we're doing at Pride again this year is called the Walking School Bus. It is an initiative from Count Me In, which is an initiative to keep our attendance up. We choose a particular neighborhood in the area, and we have a coordinator within our building, you know, thanks to the district, and through Count Me In, we have funds to pay for that person. And she organizes staff to go out and outreach people, and we bring children from their homes to the bus stop, just to make sure that they get to school every day. So we continue with that this year. We're looking forward to continuing with that and see the impact that it'll have on our attendance rates. Our PTA is up and running really strong. We're still co-partners with MCS. We're doing things a little bit different this year in that we're setting ourselves up to possibly separate at the end of the year, but there are a lot of activities we're doing together. Tomorrow night, we'll have Pops on the Playground. Our PTA at Pride did a AM coffee last Monday. It rained, but it didn't matter. We just had coffee. And again, trying to recruit as many parents as we can because we know the importance of that. Over the last, the first two weeks of school, Mrs. Daly and I did a meet and greet with our students in grades first, second, third, and fourth. Just a reminder to what are our school-wide expectations, welcoming them back, reminding them about how to create their expectations in their classrooms. So that was a lot of fun to meet with them. We're individually going into pre-K and K classrooms because they can't sit in a big gymnasium by themselves right now, so we'll get there. During that meet and greet, we reminded the children about our service dog project that we have at Pride. We have three service dogs that have returned to us this year, again, following all the guidelines of the school board policies in the state. So we have, one of our dogs is with our guidance counselor, and two of our dogs are with one of our social worker, special education, social worker. And they work with the children, they work with the adults. We're very fortunate to have them. They bring a lot of joy and a lot of comfort in our building, so we're grateful for that. As you know, we're recipients of the First 10 Grant. We had our first team meeting and network meeting. So two weeks ago, myself, Mr. Bouzier, Shayna Palmer, our team joined our facilitator just to start, continue with our work that we started in July. And then we had a network meeting, and the network meeting was pretty cool because we met people from all over the country who are either finishing the grant, starting like us, or in the middle. So it was great to connect with people from Michigan, Rhode Island, Pennsylvania. So how did you do your play and learn, and how did you do your parenting campaign? And Shayna Palmer and I made a connection with a person in Rhode Island about some ideas that it sounds like in that school is very similar to our school, so we're making connections that way. So as I said to you guys in August, we're really looking forward to that grant. Every, there's not a day that doesn't go by that it hits me that the importance of that connection with those families before they come to us, and how, when we make those connections, how the success it has for the children. So we keep working on that. We continue to work with our student leadership group every year. Our current fourth graders, who were third graders last year, they're helping Mrs. Daly and I recruit new student leaders, and we'll be doing those recruiting meetings Wednesday and Thursday. The kids know that they have to have teacher recommendations and parent permission, so we're rolling with that. Some of the things we have to do this year are name our mascot. We have a logo, but we haven't named the lion yet, so we've got to come up with a cool name. Also, some of the things they did last year was they were helpers outside for pre-K and K recess, so hopefully we'll get them to volunteer on that. And just one more plug today, I think was one of the first days we, all the pre-K kids wore their rain suits, and they went outside in the rain. So you'll see lots of pictures coming up. We had kids with dinosaur rain suits and frog rain suits. It was really cute. So please come visit us. Right on Main Street, so come visit us.
Susan, nice job with you and your staff and your students on a great opening at Pride as well. What I found neat was when you talked about the First 10 Grant, Shayna was joining families at when they came in for the, no, the-
The screening.
Screening, yeah, sorry. But when they were there for the screening, being able to build those relationships even starting then, I thought was pretty powerful, as you were able to be able to look at that. So that's pretty exciting, as you can look at that as well as everything from the Walking School Bus and the other initiatives that you have going on with that. So, great job. Any questions or comments for Susan?
Amy?
No, just, thank you. Sounds fun. Thanks.
Tracy?
Hi, everyone. Tracy Halsey, Principal at Margaret Chase Smith School.
Is your light on?
I think it is.
Yep.
All right. It also has been a busy and productive first few weeks of school at MCS. We have 437 coyotes, which is the highest we have ever had for enrollment at MCS since we opened our doors, so it's really exciting. It's up over like 100 more than we did back in 2020, so we are growing, but we're so happy. We've achieved an impressive attendance rate so far, 97% across our grade levels to open, which is really impressive compared to years in the past as well. We're proud of that. Just want to say thank you to our families for supporting that important goal, especially when it was warm and sunny and everyone wanted to go to the beach. They still made them come, so thank you, families. Our students have settled into their routines really remarkably well. Our teachers report a strong start to the academic year. We have our morning meetings underway as we continue to build strong relationships with each and every student. Our fourth grade den ambassadors have already started their work, like Susan was talking about. That's our student leadership team. And we held our first monthly assembly last week, in which we're challenging students to complete acts of respect this month. So Chase, our mascot, has challenged them to complete 150 acts of respect, and if they do, we're going to have picnics with Chase by the end of the month. So hopefully that will happen. So our extracurricular programs have resumed. We have a lot of enthusiasm around that. Thank you to our amazing PTA like Susan was talking about. We have popsicles on the playground tomorrow night. We're also going to have our first-ever pre-K parent night in early October, just inviting in families from our school and SRTC, because we're trying to build that relationship with them as well. That's important to us. Our school clubs will start in October. Bowling, for some reason, is always the favorite, so that's the one we're going to start with. Everyone loves bowling. For maintenance and facilities, we did have some projects. For a couple of years, Matt's been trying to get us a field. We finally have a field of grass instead of weeds, which is nice. And we added a sandbox, which you would have thought was the biggest thing ever. So we brought back our sandbox, and our first graders are out there making lots of sand sculptures. So you have to drive by and see our pups digging away. And we're really working on enhancing our communication channels with regular updates to all our families, so we're using our newsletters or emails. We did give 10 tours to incoming grades 2, 3, and 4 students who transferred the district. This summer, Mr. Bouzier and I met with 16 of our new mainers families in August to prep from the beginning of the year, which is really nice. It was great just to meet them outside of school, clarify questions, talk about transportation, what the school looks like. I think that really helped a lot to the start of the school year. Leah Marks, I can't speak enough about her, is an amazing outreach worker. She has been instrumental in making family visits to home with admin, having conversations. She's also brought in a lot of students that missed the bus and really connects our community, so thank you for that position. Our open house was busy with 706 visitors entering our building. The line was out the door, and we're so grateful that families came in and completed those free and reduced forms for us. Students completed a scavenger hunt throughout the school. They took home their first book of the year. We had our PTA there. We had Fame, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, and just a lot of community trying to connect students to outside agencies as well because that's important to us. For professional development, our educators have engaged in professional development sessions to stay current with their latest teaching methods. This year, our focus is on our ESOL students and how to provide that support. So teachers had the opportunity to participate in PSYOP training during our Teacher Workshop Day, which is Sheltered Instructional/Observational Protocol, and we're continuing that throughout our Teacher Workshop Days and ERDs. We've also met with two consultants from the Department of Education to break down our current family communication needs and our best practices. So we're really trying to get out there and make sure that we're using everything we can to support our staff as well. And we're extremely grateful for the addition of Lenore Williams. She is very amazing, our ESOL teacher. She comes with a plethora of knowledge, and she's currently servicing 31 of our students in grades K to 4. So she is running around in roller skates if you ever stop by our building. For our social-emotional update, we're in the early stages of implementing our second step lessons, and our school counselor has already delivered 15 lessons so far, has joined numerous morning meetings to build relationships. We've started our lunch button sessions, new student lunch groups, and push-in lessons into our ESOL classroom, because that's something we want to try new this year. And we're doing a new weekly breathing technique modeled during morning meetings. So we worked on like a window breathing today, a board where they go around and breathe around. So each week, it's a new one, and the kids practice it at home as well, so we're hoping to build on with that. I do want to express my gratitude to the dedicated staff, students, and parents who have contributed to a successful start to our school year. The collaborative effort and commitment to our coyote values have been evident in everything this chief so far, so thank you, everyone, for ongoing support.
And thank you, Tracy, and to your staff and students as well for a successful opening. Great work, especially welcoming our new mainers. That's challenging work when you look at what's been going on there. So kudos to you and your staff and your students for doing that. I think one of the advantages of all the rain we had this summer was your field. That helped.
I think it did.
Okay, if you want to look at that. We can't take credit for the grass. It's green, and it's growing with all the rain that we had. And another observation is, it looks like Chase the Coyote is a little shorter than he's been in the past.
Yeah, he's going through a growing stage now, but we're hoping. We're really hoping.
No, great job. Any questions, comments for Tracy?
Go ahead, Amy.
Love it. I was glad to hear you say that the pre-Kers at SRTC are welcomed over for all like the fun PTA events, which they kind of miss at the high school, so that's great. Thank you.
That's our goal, yeah. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Matt?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for having me. Little different position this year, but after a fast and furious ad drop season, people changing their schedules and things like that, I'm very happy to welcome 639 students to Sanford Regional Technical Center every year, or this year. I'm blessed with an outstanding staff. It's a bit of a pleasant change seeing students that want to come to school every day. That has been the one change that I think has been positive, at least to my core. Very happy to have a very outstanding partner in crime across the hall, Mrs. Amanda Doyle, along with that core group, the SHS administrative team, that I know so well, along with Mike Redman as my assistant. We've been off to a great start. We had an open house the day before school started. It was a bit of a long day with the Teacher Workshop, but we welcomed in all of our new students. We didn't have a Step Up Day in the spring, for whatever reason, so this was an opportunity for those students to see their new rooms. We're still talking about whether or not the Step Up Day was better or the open house was better, so they'll stand by for that one. was better, so they'll stand by for that one. We, this year, I have a lot of ideas. Mr. Nelson had to hold me back a little bit. But very exciting news that LD 436 was passed into law this year by the state of Maine, which will help our students earn core credits for their work they successfully complete in their CTE program. This is going to take a lot of work and we're working with eight sending schools total, but I think in the end it's going to be very exciting for our students. We're also working right now to get through all of our safety testing, which is part of our school climate, getting through all that safety stuff. So now the shops and a lot of the classrooms are starting to come to life. And while folk dancing may not be your favorite, you can come down and now you'll start hearing some of the music, a lot of country and classic rock that plays in a lot of those rooms. So feel free to come down and visit. We also had our first voluntary leadership committee meeting that happened last week. A lot of great input and I think a lot of ideas are going to come from there. And then lastly, for our capacity building, we're going to focus some attention on grading and practices to come up with some type of a workability or 21st century rubric that assesses these students. A lot of the times when we get calls from employers, they're not asking, you know, how well does the student know the content? They want to know, does the student show up every day? Is the student responsible? So starting to take some of those things and develop a rubric so we can assess students on that and then have a record of it. There's a lot of different ways you can do that and there's a lot of different programs that are out there that do that for you. But we're going to work through that this year as well. And we'll focus our PD time on not only the LD 436 initiative, but also that capacity building with the, building our rubric to assess students. And with that, other than getting all the buses to the school on time, that's been my biggest challenge so far. But we're only a few minutes off at this point. I think we've got that almost down and it's been very exciting so far to start the year and we'll keep working to find ways to increase our capacity and continue to grow the technical center.
Matt, no, great job with your opening at SRTC. I was able to stop by for the open house and that was great to see the turnout and the energy that was going on with that, that I think really did a nice job of starting the year off for SRTC and doing that. And you've got some exciting things happening, right? When you start to really look at some things that people have talked about before, about being able for students who are interested in CTE to also be able to earn core credit for that, I think is exciting and being able to do that. And then also focusing on those 21st century habits of work that I think are so critical for our students with that. So good job. Any questions, comments for Matt and SRTC?
I actually have a question. The voluntary leadership committee, is that, tell me about that.
Well, when I was in high school, we had our department chair meeting. We had department chairs that were paid, who were in charge of each department. That was our leadership team. In the tech center, we have a couple of liaisons that serve on that high school department chair committee. But for us, we have faculty meetings and opportunities to get together like that, but we don't have an open forum. I don't know if we've completely came up with a name, but we pretty much called it a town hall type thing. We had some ideas. Obviously, I have some topics and I just want their feedback. While I'm not completely new to the tech center, because I was the assistant director there prior for three years, things have changed. The total system has kind of changed and spun around. So trying to figure out what works best for our staff, for our students, and getting their feedback, I think is extremely important. And I didn't really have a mechanism to get that. So I tempted people with snacks and told them we wouldn't keep them too, too long, but a lot of people showed up and we were excited after that first one. I think there's some energy around it and we've got a lot of things to tackle, admissions I haven't really talked about this too much yet because I still have to talk to the superintendents, but alternating day for the tech center. Having the first-year students come one day, the second-year students come next, that gives us a full workday each time the kids come. So there's a lot of different things that I'd like feedback on before I start presenting those things to superintendents and the people who can essentially make those changes for us.
That's exciting. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I love, you know, getting together and having, you know, just open conversation, just kind of brings ideas and things, looking outside the box is really what CTE is anyway, because when they're in the workplace, that's what they're going to have to do, like think on their feet. So I love, and I love that there's, that you guys are thinking outside the box with like the rubric of like just what employers want now. It's not like it was.
Right.
And so I think that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, well, like instead of department chairs with that, you have pretty much 22, 23 department chairs.
Correct.
With that, so that's, you know, challenging, but it's also exciting.
Absolutely.
And being able to do that. So, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Steve? Stacy? And then you?
Two things, Matt. One, come see me, because we already have a rubric of 21st century skills, so don't do the work, you can amend it. And the only thing is, is I would really like if you could focus a little bit on the nail salon, because if we could schedule the appointments to get, you know, those things taken care of here at school, that would be amazing. Hair, too, all of it, right? That was the selling point, right? That area. I'm here, Stacy Bissell, Director of Special Ed, and I've been asked to report out on the opening of the bridge. This summer was a busy summer and this year we are starting the bridge with 60% of our staff being brand new. It, I feel very fortunate. I have found, not myself, but all of us together, but really some amazing hires and really different experiences in life. We have an educational technician who is a registered nurse who is done with that field. I have someone that was a CEO of a huge company in Florida that's returning back to work here. I recognized a name during an interview and I just didn't place it. And when we got on the Zoom interview, because they were way up north, I realized it was someone that I started my career with at Sweetser. And so it's just, it's been, it's always a challenge when you have that many new staff, but we started our year off with really, I guess philosophically, that we think that you have to be a highly effective team and that's a lot of work. And there's a ladder to it and there's, you go up and down the ladder, but these kids can be challenging. And if the adults don't have a system that they understand and have a way to get support, it can go south quickly. So we've done training on the highly effective team, that'll be ongoing, completed the cycle of disruptive behaviors, a training on boundaries. We went over roles and responsibilities, what's restorative justice, positive reinforcement. The next step for us is to do the training with the cycle of disruptive behavior with our high school students, so that they can start to see those pieces and recognize them. Right now, as of today, we have four classrooms. We have two teacher openings right now. So we have a middle school, an elementary, and two high school classrooms open. We have 31 students as of today that are in the program. And I just updated the intake and referrals. I have three students that are in referral, an IEP requested from another parent, so we have five kiddos on the books. Right now, we're desperately seeking, not Susan, but desperately seeking a teacher, because we have two high school teachers, so right now their numbers are really large. They've got about 12 kids in a classroom. I think, oh, the only other thing that I wanted to say is that during the really hot, we're on the third floor at Willard and that can get rather toasty, although people have dealt with that for years and years and years. But we, and now I guess it will become an annual thing, but we had Waterworld 2023 on that really hot stretch on Thursday and Friday. And it was really interesting because they were students that I've known forever and I have never seen them take their coat off. And even when it was really hot, their coat was on and I was worried about them. But you get them a little water and fountains and fun things and their friends and they're in shorts and running around. So it was great. We took a bunch of pictures and we have two bulletin boards. One, I have all the pictures of the staff and like three things to know about us. And then we have one of all the kids and three things they want us to know about them. And the only other thing that was interesting for all of us is we had a transfer student from another district come in and so knew the name of the student, but no connection, didn't trigger anything. And the father and the student walked in and it was a student that we had before. And he was like coming home, right, to everybody and he was like, oh my God, Mr. B., Mr. Huntley. So he's really pleased, but it's just, that's the first time for us that's kind of ever happened. So it's been a big, it's a reboot in terms of, we had some staff retire, quite a few by plan. And I think the only other piece is that it was just really helpful when we did the marketing campaign and we were able to increase, you know, the salaries and make us more competitive. In a matter of two weeks, we had had, we filled 40 positions. And it was, I know money isn't everything and there's so much more that's related to why people want to work where they want to work, but I was grateful for the fact that people looked at that as being a factor. And the only thing I'd say, it's hard to get in our building because it's, there's no cameras yet and the phones are in the offices, but if you want to stop in anytime, you just come through Adult Ed, they'll know who you are and they'll send you right up. We'd love to see you. Just give us a little while to finish decorating all the bulletin boards.
Stacy, good job to you and your team. I would echo your thoughts as well as kind of the reboot. A lot of positive energy coming in as I was able to meet with some of the new staff coming on board and see the efforts that you made with your team early on with really focusing on that teamwork aspect with that, because I think, I think you've got the foundation for a real successful year to be able to build off of that with it. So kudos to you and your team on that. Well done, well done. Any questions, comments, thoughts for Stacy and the bridge?
I just think it's, I think it's great. I mean, you know, I can only imagine 60% of new staff is challenging, but I do think, like just to quote you, like the rebooting of it, it's good. It's like new energy.
Yep.
Everybody really, like the students get really a fresh slate from any of them. You know, we've heard that before of some kids and I think that it's just, it's good probably for everybody, so it's awesome. Thank you.
And different people bring different sort, I mean, it's very interesting to have people have all these ideas and I have to hold them back. Like, wait, we got to look at the process. Like, that's a lovely experience. There was something else that I was gonna, but I guess it, it doesn't matter. There was something I was going to say about, well, it's out of my head. Sorry. One of the things I did want to share is that right now, like our full capacity, when we have all teachers filled, is about 42. We will meet or exceed that this year if we just can find the teachers. And I know that the posting just went live in various places. We've had a lot of luck, but that's different than last year, so it's really a reboot, which is exciting.
Thank you, Stacy. We'll continue with director's reports. We'll catch Mr. B. a little off guard here as we can continue on with Steve talking about our vaping committee update and school safety update.
Good evening, everybody. So tonight I want to update you about the work of our vape committee. We had our first meeting last Tuesday on September 12th. We spent a good chunk of our meeting reviewing the rubric, which outlines our responses to vape infractions. This rubric was created over the summer with a subgroup of the vape committee. The subgroup included administration outreach, our newly hired substance use counselor, and the tobacco prevention coordinator from Southern Maine Healthcare. We looked at what our current practices were and then we developed a tiered approach in grades five through 12 that balances accountability with support. As you look through the rubric, I'll give you an overview of what's in here. The first thing we look at is education. Under education, we have a universal prevention. That's what are all kids getting? And so in terms of universal prevention, we have reviewed our health curriculum and we are looking to use the Catch My Breath curriculum in our health classes. For those students that have a first offense, we are providing education and that education will be done in our support and transition room at the middle school and the student success center at the high school. The education materials that they use within those programs will be tailored to the individual and also tailored to the experience of the folks we have in those positions. Once we move on to students that have a second offense, we have added a new program that's sponsored by the American Lung Association and offered by Southern Maine Healthcare called the In-Depth Program. And so that is an interactive program that teaches students about nicotine dependence, establishing healthy alternatives, and how to kick the unhealthy addiction that got them in trouble in the first place. This is similar to the SERP program that we use with students that violate our marijuana policy. And so this, we feel, is going to be a nice fit for us with that. In terms of, as you look at this rubric, there's counseling. And so, starting with the very first offense, there's that meeting with the counselor to do some screening. What's going on? Why? Why did we use? What's your level of use? And to assess with mental health needs, because we know students that are often using substances, sometimes there's some underlying mental health needs that are going unaddressed. And so using that school counselor as a sort of a screening process for that. And as you move up the chain, at any time, there can be a referral made to the substance use counselor. But as you see, as we move into that second and third offense, that substance use counselor plays a greater role. Also within that, we talked about accountability and support. We felt strongly as a team that students that violated the policy needed to have time away from the community. And so with that first offense, there will be some time out of school, but then there's that time with the student support and transition program and the student success center at the high school, where we're going to be able to do some of that education that we talked about. And then as you move up, the more you violate the policy, there are increased number of days out. And there's some flexibility in there for administration with that. And all throughout this policies, there's a parent meeting required or parent contact at the high school, but trying to get the parents and families on board with students. So we feel, we're feeling really good about this. It's been vetted through the whole committee, gave us some feedback on it. The administrative team has seen this. I shared with you guys on the, a couple of times now in the weekly memo that we send out to the school committee and we're feeling good about this. And unless we have any red, anything you'd like to see different or changes from the school committee, we, our plan is to begin moving this forward.
Steve, just a clarification, not a policy, but more of a procedure, correct? It's more of a procedure in terms of, for us, building off that consistency with that. I think, like you say, it's a balance between accountability as well as support.
Just, just to be clear, so this is with vaping, non-marijuana?
Non-marijuana, yeah.
With marijuana, it is the
10 days.
10 days, second time.
Yeah. This just strictly addresses our vape
Yep.
use amongst students, yeah.
Great, great work. Thank you.
Yeah. Really appreciate the administrative team and the members who are all involved in that, Swool and Vardo and folks for taking their time in the summer to really hash this out. I feel like we landed at a good spot, so.
Yeah, and also, I was able to stop in at last week's meeting, and we also invited a couple of our city council members as well, and they, it was, I think, very helpful for them to be able to participate in that, because one of the things we're looking at trying to make a statewide push is some of the banning of the flavored tobacco and vapes. And so, want to thank our city council for their support. I also think, as Steve mentioned, having the person from Southern Maine Healthcare also involved in that, I really think you're starting to see a lot of, a lot of headway, a lot of impact in terms of the committee. So a good job to Steve, as well as the others, for all of their efforts.
In terms of next step for the committee, really looking at communication. How can we communicate some of the work that we've been doing with the community, the committee? Looking at making sure our staff are trained in that Catch My Breath program. Some of our health teachers have training, others need training. Coordinating with Southern Maine Healthcare in terms of the In-Depth Program, because Southern Maine Healthcare can come in to deliver that, but we may want to also train other staff members to be able to deliver that. And then looking at curriculum in grades below
Five.
You know, what are we doing in that upper elementary, that three and four?
Yes.
To make sure we're narrowing in on that as well. So I'm feeling good about the direction we're in. I think we have some momentum. Our next meeting will be on October 10th. School safety, I will be talking about the school crisis plan a little bit later this evening. School safety continues to be an ongoing priority in the district. We stress with staff the importance of making sure our doors are locked, making sure they're not propped, making sure that the visitors are entering that main entryway. We're screening our visitors. We now have vestibule in all of our buildings. Making sure that staff are wearing their ID badges, visitors are wearing their ID badges, and stressing with staff and students, if you see something, say something. Can't say that enough in terms of, that has prevented some incidents from happening as we've moved along. We continue to train staff in the ALIS model. Over the summer, our SROs trained the entire food service staff, as well as our custodians and new staff. So feeling good about that initial training that we've done with the ALIS model. Today, we conducted our first round of lockdown drills everywhere except for Sanford High School. We were going to do those later this week. Overall, the drills went very well. I was mentoring Mr. Nelson this afternoon. We've come a long ways in terms of first drill of the year, all our doors are locking. The window shades, in terms of, we have shades, and staff and students are taking them seriously. The Alertus notification system went very well today. We have a couple people we need to get hooked up, but in general, that went well. So really proud of the work we're doing there. Moving forward, we're going to look at training with staff, and when we do drills, looking at more scenarios. Lockdown drills are not always going to occur at nine o'clock in the morning. They're going to occur when we have kids at lunch, when we have kids at recess, during passing time, and so looking at some of those more difficult scenarios to accomplish. Our safety committee did meet, and I'll share more of the work that we've been doing in that at our next meeting on October 2nd. And that's all I have until I get to the crisis plan.
Thank you very much. Beth?
So I have a couple of quick updates for you. Back on September 11th, my curriculum committee met, and I sort of reviewed all of the plans, excuse me, that I have going for this current school year. Last year, I had a curriculum, sorry, totally forgot. I had a book study with several different members of the K-4 staff to look at balanced literacy. What are the pieces to a good literacy curriculum? And we started reviewing that, identifying what our current curriculum does, what it doesn't do, and how we can kind of make it, improve on it. So we're going to continue that work. One of the first things we did was we changed to a new phonics program from the University of Florida Literacy Institute. The kindergarten teachers are implementing it this year. I've got three, actually, now, first grade teachers over at MCS that wanted to pilot it. It's a K-2 program. So far, it seems to be going really well. So we're really hoping it's a more structured phonics curriculum than what we had prior. So we're hoping to see some really good improvement there. And as the year goes, we'll continue to do work and refine what it is we might need to alter and adjust with our curriculum. I also spent some time this summer with the middle school ELA department, the English department, grades six through eight. They've begun, they did the work last year of reviewing their standards and their current curriculum, and they're now in the process of writing their own. It was something they wanted to do, and I encouraged it, even though I told them it was going to be a lot of work, but they were game for it, and they've been doing a really nice job at doing that, making a curriculum that's more enjoyable to our students, like, they're able to connect with it a little bit more, while giving them the rigor that they need with the reading and writing. So I'm really excited about that. For health and PE, Steve did mention that we are looking at adding some tobacco and vaping curriculum. And one of the goals I have this year for curriculum is K-12, looking at the health curriculum, to make sure that it's cohesive across the board, all the way through the high school. So that's something that we'll be working on. They'll be creating units, making sure that, especially in elementary, no matter what elementary year school you're in, the curriculum is pretty consistent, and you're receiving the same thing. ESOL, with the increase of our new mainers, I introduced some new curriculum for our pull-out models. I introduced National Geographic's Hour World for Lenore down at MCS. It's really exciting that she's been starting to use with the kids. For the middle and high school, we expanded our Read 180 and System 44. That program is actually very supportive of students who speak a second language. But I also added on English 3D. So for those students who come in knowing no English, you start with the English 3D program, and it's kind of immersive, and it teaches them academic language, like pieces of the school cafeteria, teacher, you know, things like that, to get them acclimated to the school. And I talked with Teresa Weber at the high school, and the kids are, they're really loving it, and they're picking up on the vocabulary and saying, hey, that's our vocab word. And so she's really, really seeing a lot of gains already in just a matter of a couple of weeks. So I'm really excited about all that. And I also increased the usage of Read 180 and System 44 at the high school and the special ed department. We had one teacher using it last year, and we've increased it by three more teachers this year. So we have close to 100 students using the program, and we've seen great gains in the one teacher that was doing it, in students' comprehension and Lexile levels. So we're really excited to see how it works this year for a larger, for a larger group. Let me see, our next meeting is December 4th for the curriculum committee. And once, now that I've shared, we're going to be putting, I'll be putting our notes from our meeting right on the website, so people that couldn't attend are able to see it, but I wanted to share tonight before I had Sam show me how to do it, because I forgot, so. He gets to teach me tomorrow. He's very excited. Any questions about my curriculum and what we're doing? No? Okay. You're welcome. And so the other thing that I have tonight is just a quick update. It is assessment season in the state of Maine. So as we know, the state of Maine made NWEA, our Maine Education Assessment, and this is the first year that it will be full from fall to spring. Last year, they kind of introduced it in the spring to kind of get our feet wet, and now we have it for the full year. So they set the testing date between October 2nd and 27th, and this is for grades three through eight and 10 at the high school. Here in Sanford, we've used the program, we've used the assessment for years, so we'll actually be assessing kids K through 10. So we'll add, yeah, first and second grade and ninth grade as well, because it's our universal screener. It helps us understand where students are at, how we can help them. It's a wonderful data point. If we have somebody who's new to the district, before their paperwork gets here, we can give a quick assessment and make sure that we place them appropriately, so that they feel success when they come into Sanford. The other assessment that we'll be working with this fall is our Early Bird Dyslexia Screener. This was, again, a law that the state of Maine passed, that all districts had to use a dyslexia screener for their students. So what we're trying to do, I worked with our district coaches, we want to make sure that if we're giving students an assessment, we want to make sure that the teachers have the ability to use that data and create intervention. So instead of giving the assessment three times a year, we're only doing it twice. So we're doing it this fall. So kindergarten, because we don't ask them to take the NWEA in the fall, they're going to do the screener during October. And that will give them immediate results. They'll have done their observational survey, letter ID, then they'll do this dyslexia screener, and then they'll be able, it's more data for them to start their small group instructions, really work on those phonics pieces and all of those early learning skills. Grade one, because they are taking NWEA, we're going to have them wait until November to take it. So they'll be able to start with their NWEA data, as well as other data that they've worked on in the classroom, and then start with Early Bird. And then we are going to do it again in March, rather than waiting till the end of the year, when the teachers are already doing NWEAs and benchmarks. This will allow them April, May, and June for more interventions, and then hopefully give those students another few opportunities to learn and grow. And that's where we are. Any questions?
Nice job, Beth. Thank you. Appreciate all your work and coordination, both with curriculum, but also as we get ready for the upcoming assessment season. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to new business.
Oh, we got to go back to now.
Sorry, that's right. I forgot about all of your stuff. Superintendent's report.
All right. Aiden, let's turn it over to Aiden. He's riding solo today. Emma's under the weather. So Aiden, what do you got for a student report?
So I don't have much, but last week on Wednesday, the counselors started to kind of transition us seniors into our lives after high school. So in the cafeteria during Spartan time, we had a meeting where we filled out our basic information on the Common App to get ready to start applying to our four-year universities. They're going to hold the same kinds of meetings, not doing the same thing, but for people that are going into, like, community college or are going straight into the workforce right after high school, which is awesome. And then, all I wanted to say is that homecoming things are still happening. Tomorrow, we'll be in the school store from 2:30 to 6:30, working on our library posters. And then Thursday, we'll be doing the same thing, 2:30 to 6:30, hopefully finishing up those posters and then finish, or starting our parade float. And then, after that, at 7:30, we are going to have our first senior dance practice. So, very exciting.
Yes, good luck. When people think that just happens, they don't realize all the hard work that goes behind it in terms of looking at that. So, awesome. Thank you, Aiden. Good job. Want to share the latest spotlight. Leading off for us is recently in Sanford, the Els Club sponsored the Wall That Heals, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall in Sanford. The timing wasn't ideal because it was right at the beginning of our school year, which made it challenging for people, for us to be able to get as many people down as we would like, but students in the Sanford High School Alternative Learning Program will be able to go down and visit. So we've got an article with them quoting some of our students and that powerful experience that they had. And also, kudos to our Sanford High School football team. They were able to go and help the Els Club when it came down to tear down with that, using all the manpower that we had to be able to do that. So a big kudos there. I know at our home football game last Friday night, many of the Els came to also show their support and their thanks for that in terms of supporting the football team. So I thought that was pretty neat. Next up, we have, sometimes you hear ELOs. In education, we sometimes have our own jargon, and ELO stand for Extended Learning Opportunities. And so we do have an article in there about our career exploration coordinator, both at the high school and technical center, Katie Schindler. So there are a lot of information there, talking about ELOs and their importance in being able to connect our students to the world of work, and internship, and other various opportunities. Next up, you heard earlier when Principal Barron was, talking about the opening of Carl J. Lamb, and we mentioned this at our last meeting, but there is a article in there regarding the Carl J. Lamb Playground and that equipment upgrade that is on its way, coming soon. We also wanted to take the time to also appreciate our custodians and our maintenance staffs. You heard that as our principals talk about the opening, but really want to thank our custodians and our maintenance staff, all of the work that they were able to do to get all of our schools and buildings ready for the opening of the school year. They're also doing that while, as you know, our facilities are used in the summertime. There's a lot of summer programming to be able to come back and do that. And so, big kudos, because I really thought this year, our facilities were in great shape at the beginning of the school year. So big appreciation to them. Next up, we have sites around our schools. Here, you can see various schools, and what, as you know in the spotlight, what we try to do is be able to link each school to their newsletter, so that people can also be able to stay connected that way at our elementary schools as well as Sanford Middle School. And then, also, the Spartan Times is an opportunity, the high school's online newspaper. We always try to look at, trying to find connections there. And in this edition, we are talking about fall sports teams, being able to kick off their seasons. This edition, the employee spotlight, is Catherine McCall, a self-contained special education teacher at Carl J. Lamb. And then, we also want to continue to push the Sanford Spartan App. That's where you're going to be able to get a lot of different updates, not just when there's no school. You can get also a lot of other information there, and you can really personalize that in a way to receive the notifications that you want, to be able to stay up to date with that. And then, once again, we, there's an area there to look at some of the openings that we still have, looking to fill in the Sanford School Department, as well as just some various announcements. And then that last page is also, same thing. What we try to do with our communication is really try to keep people connected through the various things. In this area, it will connect to the school newsletters, but it also will connect with the city's newsletter. And then there's some other additional links down there for people to be able to stay connected with and being able to do that. And so, big thank you to Sam Bonzi in terms of latest spotlight. Our next one will probably be on October 2nd, and that's when we can have Aiden and Emma and your new rep joining you to be able to present that. This time, I did that because knowing we had the meeting last week, we were still working on that right up through today. Next up, I want to talk about our enrollment. The October 1st Maine Department of Education cutoff date is quickly approaching, and so as we bring that up, I've got an update to bring that up. If you remember last week, when we looked at totals, we were at a point where we had 56 more EPS subsidy students on September 11th, September 8th, rather. That was Friday, September 8th, and in comparison to October 1st in 2022. We were up 56, and this week, we're at 55. We had some moving and shaking going on there a little bit, some coming in, some going out. So we are still up over 55, 54 students over that compared So we are still up over 55, 54 students over that compared last week. And I am happy to announce that if you remember, we have 96 pre-K slots, and we had 92 on the September 8th, because we did have a few people that were signed up, that were not able to attend. But Steve worked hard on the waiting list, and so we're right at 95 out of the 96. And we're confident we're going to be able to be at full capacity for the October 1st deadline with that. And then the next page breaks that down a little bit more, as you can kind of see where we were on the 8th and where we were on the 18th, as far as transfers in and transfers out, just to be able to see how that is working. Another big push that we're doing in the district, and another plug, is those free and reduced lunch forms. Those are important for our district when it comes back to funding. That and the alternate economically disadvantaged form, the alternate form that we use. We want to thank all of our families and parents who've completed those forms and turned those in. We will be continuing to push so that we can get all people turning. Even if people don't qualify, it's still important for us to be able to have that information, because it is a big funding source for us, and we want to make sure that we have everyone doing that. So that's also going to be another big push, as we look at it, where we are for it. And so, also, as part of the enrollment shifts, we up our, we up, we are up with our ESL English Second Language students, our new mainers. Those are also up, when you look at an increase of where we were in October of 2022. We're now, as of September 18th, at 106. And that's an increase of 55 from where we were last October 1st for that. So, any questions on the enrollment? We'll continue, as I said, October 1st is an important deadline. Big thank you to Ann Lur in the central office, our data specialist, as she's really staying on top of that, as we do our best to make sure we're maximizing all funding. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. New business?
Tonight, I have for you the updated Sanford School Department's Emergency Crisis Response Plan. If you remember, last summer, we did a substantial amount of work on that plan as we brought on the ALIS model. And so that's when a lot of the updates happened. However, last year, as a result of the incidents that happened on November 15th, the one area that we did spend a lot of time on in the crisis response plan was the reunification protocol, talking about what happens after an incident. And so the crisis team worked through that process last year during our crisis meetings. And so that section has been updated. In addition to the annual update, some annual updates that we make are the Staff Directory, the Crisis Response Phone Tree, the Emergency Alarm Phone Tree. And the administrative team spent some time reviewing our evacuation sites, which can be found in NXB. So I'd like to thank the crisis team, Cheryl Drisco, Beth Laterno, and our administrative team for helping with those updates on our crisis plan. And I bring it forward to you tonight for approval.
And just as a reminder, we don't show the plan, because it is, we want to make sure that that is not something that is released out to the public. We have shared it with the school committee, so you've been able to be able to look at it. But we're not going to be presenting that this evening by choice, on purpose and by design.
Do you want to make the recommendation?
I would like to make the recommendation to adopt the crisis management plan as presented.
Thank you, Amy.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor.
Thank you for doing all that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Steve, for coordinating that, and our administrative team for being able to do that updates. As Steve mentioned, last year, a lot of the heavy work went in as we went back into some of those changes that allowed us this year just to be able to continue with updates for it.
Okay, no old business. And next are resignations, retirements, staff appointments. Wow, there's a lot of those. And then staff transfers and staff nominations.
So I'll start. I'm not going to read all of our staff appointments. I could probably hear everyone, I could just feel everyone wondering if I was going to be announcing pages and pages of our Schedule C and Schedule D appointments. But I did want to announce, as far as resignations, Tiffany Bork is the Library Ed Tech III at Carl J. Lamb. We've already advertised for that position, and we do have interviews coming right up. We might have already had them, but I know they're imminent to be able to do that. And then in terms of staff appointments, we do have some kitchen personnel at, to announce, Mary Lemay at Sanford Pride, Rebecca LaFond at Sanford High School. And then we also were able to hire Justin Barker as a long-term substitute at Sanford Middle School. As I mentioned, we do have pages. This is the meeting where we announce the Schedule C1 and Schedule D appointments. These are mainly stipend positions that are filled throughout the district. And that's everything from class advisors to music to yearbook and the different clubs and activities that we have, our various civil rights teams. And that is, as I mentioned, throughout the district. We also have our Certification Committee on here, as well as our department chairs, as well as our mentors for our probationary teachers. We also have those on there as well, that take up quite a few for that. And so, as I said, we're looking at almost four pages of these. So if it's okay with the committee, people will be able to see those and announce those as we have them up on the screen. Thank you, Sarah, as removing those through the various areas there for those announcements. And then, that'll lead us to staff transfers. Kitchen personnel, three-fifths at MCS do a full-time MCS position. That'll be Jesse Giles at MCS. We do have a staff nomination to approve this evening for the school committee. I recommend that the school committee accept the nomination of Katherine Bernier, Katie Bernier, as a school counselor at Sanford Middle School, filling the ESIR position. I met with Katie last week, very impressed. She's finishing up her counseling coursework. She's almost finished there. She's also got experience through the University of New England. And so, looking forward to Katie joining our team. So my recommendation is for the school committee to accept Katie as probationary, professional staff and present her with a one-year probationary contract for that. And we're looking to have Katie trying to start as early as, trying to start this week, if at all possible. Might have to extend it next week, but we're working on that as she wraps up her work at the University of New England to try to have her come in and join us. So recommending Katie Bernier for a professional staff, presented with a one-year probationary contract.
I make the recommendation to accept Katie.
I second.
All in favor? All in favor. Policies and procedures?
Okay, good evening again. Pretty straightforward policy stuff this evening. The first one is Policy AF, Commitment to Accomplishments. Policy AF, Commitment to Accomplishments, was incorporated into Policy AEC, which was Accountability Reporting to the School Committee, which was last updated in May 2023. We just did not delete this policy when we approved the rest of the A's back in May. And so my recommendation is to delete Policy AF. And then I have some first readings of policies, which are pretty straightforward. Policy BBAA, School Committee Member Authority. And that policy is just a simple change to the title of that policy. Policy BBA, School Committee Member Qualifications. The recommendation is to eliminate the word town council, since we are now a city council. And Policy BBC, School Committee Member Resignations. In our policy, there was nothing in there about where those resignations should go. And so we've added a section in there just to state that the resignations should go to the school committee chair and also to the superintendent. And so I recommend first readings of Policy BBAA, BBBA, and BBC. And that is a first reading. I definitely know my Bs.
So we're doing a motion to delete AF?
Yes.
I motion to delete AF?
I second it. Okay, all in favor? All in favor.
And then I motion to accept the first reading of BBBAC?
A, A. Keep going. BBAA, BBBA. Go ahead.
Yeah, so first reading for the three policies brought forward today. Motion, do we need to have them said?
All in favor? All in favor.
Thank you very much. And we're continuing in our, updating our policy manual. We have now moved well into the Bs, so we'll be back at it the next time.
Yep. I would just like to make a note, great job, Mr. B. You are doing, you're killing it with the policies and the updating. It's a lot of work, and you are doing a great job.
It is a lot of work.
Well, these policies are pretty straightforward. There's not a whole lot to them, so.
Perfect. But there's a lot of them.
Yeah, but we appreciate a lot of the cleaning up of what needed to be able to get done there. So, Mr. B., you're doing really good with the Bs.
The Bs.
Okay, no items for future agendas, right? Right.
Oh, I, well.
Okay.
Well, I, I feel like we are probably, we are, plan is to put it on next week's agenda, but just for the public to know that we plan to put on the agenda the legacy voting for Mr. Ferguson, our Ferg.
Classroom?
Yep. At the middle school and at the high school.
Yep, that'll be on the October 2nd agenda.
So just to be clear, what is it that we are going to add to the agenda? The naming of classrooms at the middle school and the high school. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for cleaning that up. To remember Bill Ferguson. Just wanted to clarify. Okay, calendar announcements?
Okay, so today, we did reschedule or postpone the Stipend Advisory Committee. That's going to have to be rescheduled at a later date, so I'll try to get with Amy and Jen, who are representing the school committee on that, so that we can find another date. The Wellness Committee that was scheduled for today has been, was postponed and rescheduled for tomorrow? Next Tuesday, I'm sorry. Tomorrow, next Tuesday, same place, same time. We also have our Special Education Advisory Committee meeting, which will be, it's at 2:30. So not at 2:00 PM, but at 2:30 next Monday. And that'll be at Sanford Community Adult Ed. The next Safety Committee meeting is also on the first Monday in October, October 2nd. Our next School Committee meeting, regular meeting, will be on October 2nd as well, 6:00 PM in the chambers. We are, we have a School Committee Workshop scheduled for Wednesday, October 4th, and that'll be, it's beginning at 7:30 in the morning. And then you've got the, after next Tuesday's Wellness Committee, we'll also be coming back with another one shortly after that in October. And then, we do have a School Committee Workshop in our usual second meeting slot on October 16th. And then, after Monday's, next Monday's Special Education Advisory Committee meeting, we've already got one scheduled for October for the 18th for that as well. So those are upcoming meetings.
Okay, without further ado, recommendation to adjourn this meeting at 7:28.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor? Aiden, do you want to join in too?
Thank you, Aiden.
Thank you.